Now, what proportion of schools at each level has an equity team in place?
All right, we're gonna get started. Even if there's a small group, we can have good discussion. And we have a fair amount of information to cover tonight. So just wanna get through what we need to get through. Welcome back.
Thank you.
Hope you all had a nice little break. And let's just, let's get on with it. I am gonna actually set us a timer so that we can maintain our time limit. And just to kind of review, what we were doing at the last meeting was going through the strategic plan and finding if there are things that this committee can cover, work on, focus on, since the initial and only goal at this point, or tactic at this point, has been achieved by this committee. So looking for other avenues, what the next step is, and just really going through the strategic plan to find if there is, what it is.
May I ask your clarification? Based on what we were just talking about. So that first statement, shaded in gray, that every school shall have a staff equity team. And part of our work is, in a sense, to make sure that that's happening. But we haven't seen any data on the proportion of schools that have an active equity team in place. And so we don't know if improvement is needed there. Is there an opportunity for us to take a look at that in the next couple of months?
Mr. Johnson, do you have any, do you have any access to that information?
No, we can get it.
Let's do that. So we wanna know, let me just make sure we are, try to remember what the date is, sorry.
You wanna ask the superintendent's help in doing that?
Do what now?
We want to ask the superintendent's help in doing that.
Okay. So with Dr. Faust, finding out what is it that we are, we want to know for Strategy 1, Strategy 4.1. And for those who are not looking at it, it says, ensure that all schools establish staff equity teams and that all secondary schools establish student equity teams. You would like to know the progress of?
Exactly, exactly. And this, you know, what the status is. How often do they meet? What's been accomplished? What resources do they need from the district? What else, Mr. McManus?
Hey.
Hello.
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 I'm just curious why nobody's here usually.
So Kamika let me know that there's an open house at her school today, and so she needed to be there.
There's one, okay.
Progress of frequency of meetings, resources needed.
That's awesome, thank you for saying that.
And I can reach out to Dr. Faust, you can reach out either way.
So if you reach out, just come down.
I noticed that also, when we're looking at the outcome, we're looking to grab from the work we're doing with Equity. It says, by 2027, students and staff report in biannual surveys, 90% or higher agreement that their school worksite is an inclusive place where they have a strong sense of belonging and connectedness. I know we're not at 2027, but if that's our outcome, shouldn't we be measuring if, biannually, from now until 2027 to see if that is the case? So is there any way we could have surveys rolled out, asking, with the start of the new year coming up, asking our, I know students' surveys have to be approved by the board first, but we can be asking our staff how they feel, definitely.
And if I'm not mistaken, the teacher working condition surveys will speak to?
But that's only for teachers.
Right, so I mean, that's knowing that we can get that, we can implement that because of spring 2024.
Does that have?
Is when we'll be due again to do that survey.
Does that have Equity information though, or Equity questions?
Yes. So there's a small portion of it, we can pull that up later, just to make sure. But if I'm not mistaken, there's a subsection in that survey that may give us some insight.
And then the only problem I have with that is when we are looking at the majority of our black, brown, or multicultural individuals, they are not our teachers. They are transportation staff, they are custodians, they're a teacher assistants, they're our child nutrition workers. So if we're not including them in that data, I feel like it doesn't really collect an actual view because the teacher working conditions survey is specifically for teachers only.
Oh, that only goes to teachers then?
Yes.
And does it go to like counselors?
I don't know about counselors, it could go.
It does go to all certified staff.
So all certified. So we're a district of about 2,000 certified staff and 2,000 classified staff. So then that would be, we're only hearing from 50% of our staff.
Got it.
My question is, do we already have a survey?
Yeah, we've already.
Set up?
Yes. And we'll be due to push it out again, spring 2024, so what?
But no.
For the classified staff, right?
Right, so we can go back and see what surveys already created are available and that we may not have been conducted or polled.
What is the survey that we have for classified staff?
We'll have to go, we can jot that out some things to look into.
Okay.
Yeah, and this, if every school had an equity team, right? They could be managing this for their school.
Would it be possible to get a copy of that survey?
I don't have it.
Do you have it?
See where I can locate it.
Okay. Just curious. Now, we had started going through and seeing what we could find as far as things that we felt like this committee could cover. I know it's been about a month. But does anybody have anything that they recall that stood out to them? Or, I know you had made that point there. Was there any, anything else that you had?
Well, something that stood out to me was something that Ms. Stephanie Walker said at the last meeting, and that was, the strategic plan was meant to be a dynamic plan, meaning that as we learned and achieved, we would update. And so I feel like there's been a lot of learning and perhaps achievement too, this year. And so now it's probably time for us to update, at least within this group, what our focus would be. So I love Ms. Mason that you're leading us through this. And in some ways, I just wanna be very mindful that even if we can say we've checked off a lot of things on the existing strategic plan, as a living document, there's still plenty more work to do, and we can organize for that.
Did anybody else have any thoughts? I know you had, you had mentioned some things in regards to EC and things like that. Do you recall any of those?
Um, yeah, I don't have last month's document, or it was two months ago, that document with me. And so I think we were talking primarily, I'm trying to just scroll through it online now.
I think I've written more on my original.
Yeah.
I think I have two copies.
Do you?
I don't think so, and I just grabbed the one that didn't have all the writing on it.
Oh, of course, of course. Yeah, I did, I did the same. I mean, we talked a bit about mechanisms for increased engagement with EC, least restrictive environment, and just what, what the EC department was doing. And I, I think now that an EC chair is in place, it would be wonderful to get like that real-time update from Joanna.
Absolutely, have them come see us.
Yeah, 'cause I know that you've done a lot of work on it. They presented it to us in April of 2022, I wanna say, it was either April or May, on what they were doing with co-teaching and the plan for rolling that out beyond the pilot. And so I would love to see like the update on how that is going, essentially.
I think that sounds so smart. And we had, remember in May, I believe, five questions that we developed related to that topic. And I wonder if now's the time to share that with the newly hired chair?
I know if, forgive me, if I'm misspeaking Mr. Johnson, but you did take that to Julie and her team, and then their response to us was, instead of just answering them for us, they wanted to come in person to see us. So if that's something we can maybe schedule for our September meeting, that would possibly be good to kind of hear from EC on, on what that looks like and where we are with that.
I like that direction too, 'cause then it could be just a good conversation for the follow-on questions that you all likely have collectively, so. Okay, excellent.
Mr. McManus?
We probably need to look at figuring out some way to make sure that we have the finances to support the Equity Leadership Team at Abbeynobles, at New Hanover this year. That was resolved at the last minute. But I think we need to pre, pre-arrange to make sure we have it. When I talked to the big cheese over there, he did, he was honest, he said he had no funds, no allocation. And so that's something maybe we need to at least see if we can bring it to fruition early.
I know our budget can't get passed without the state budget passing. Is there any way to know, or will Mr. Johnson's office area have fundings this year going into the 23, 24 school year?
I don't believe that it's in the budget for this year.
So how would you suggest, Mr. McManus, as a member of the board, that we find funds to allocate for that work?
I think that's a situation we need to discuss as a board with the superintendent, to see where we could. I don't wanna open any Pandora's boxes, but there are other avenues for monies. When we really want it, we usually can find it. I just think that the success of keeping that active is very, very important. And I think last year was a, I was afraid we might lose that focus. But we did, so that was important.
Thanks for bringing that up, that's important.
And then, I know Ms. Mason wanted to keep us on check with our time so that we didn't miss anything. But I think Malcolm said that we were on page 35 last.
I think that's where we stopped.
Thank you.
Look with me.
Just a reminder, the things that were highlighted and more, the things that had a budgetary constraint.
And then I know there's not much we can do with those that have budget restraints for this year as, as we're moving into a year where we're looking to be more fiscally responsible, or remain fiscal responsible. But is there any way that additional support could be gained in the 24, 25 school year? Is that something we can look at, or something that we can go ahead and say, hey, we wanna make sure, as members of this committee and the board members who serve on it, can we request or ask that that be prioritized in the upcoming year?
I like that.
You can always ask.
And that's all we're asking?
There's a time when, you know, all the directors, superintendents, et cetera, who man programs, are given a form requesting what their needs are for the next year, budget-wise. And there are places for staff, but there are also places for finances.
Yeah.
And I'm gonna sit down with Dr. Smith, my first year here, and go through that with her.
So just kind of looking at, touching on all those orange highlighted items, I think that would be something to kind of keep in mind as we move on with this work is, I mean, it's great that we have Malcolm here doing it, but he is only one person. And if we want to sustain it, then I, I feel at some point he's gonna need additional support, whether that looks like additional human capital and support, or whether it looks like additional, just funds for the programs we want him to do.
Were you even given a form for last year to fill out?
He said a form? No, I don't recall, I have to see, see the document.
If you don't remember getting, I just wondered if he did, a budget form of any shape, form, or fashion?
He said a?
A budget?
A budget request?
Yes.
You did get one?
Yeah, we went through a, the?
Did you turn in any?
Yeah, we went through all the standard processes, submission, all?
But it wasn't?
Yeah, I didn't receive any, uh?
Okay, so then it's not in, I mean, what, I don't remember that being in the budget.
Yeah, so that's, that's an important thing as a community member, when I hear that. You know, we have a nominal Equity Office, a nominal Equity position. But if there's no budget, I mean, we've not chosen to prioritize that work. At least that's one interpretation of the absence of a budget. And it'd be great just to raise that with the superintendent and the board, because that might not be the superintendent or the board's intention. They might wanna say this is a high priority for us, and so we need a budget for it.
Just to, you know, we have about a minute and a half left in this discussion. So is there any other non-highlighted?
Yeah, the last thing that, it's not highlighted, but I thought could be helpful to discuss is, and, and it's kind of on the other end of the spectrum, but AIG. We, we could probably look at some of that data in AIG space and specialty program. I know that we have been liaisons in the past for getting out some of the communication for the availability of certain specialty programs. And that is something I'm sure everybody here would, would remain willing to support.
Absolutely. And just to talk a little bit about that again, I don't wanna go over our time. But I have been meeting with Jean Hall, who is our new supervisor of specialty programs. And so we're going through with the Communications Department of doing a whole rollout of pushing and promoting those externally. But then going back to AIG, I think it would be great for us to have Maureen Meehan, who's our AIG supervisor, in here to kind of update us and provide us on data as well.
Yeah, and so those were the last two weeks I had was with Maureen regarding that data.
Okay.
As well, now that we have Ms. Jean, Ms. Jean Hall here in the space, reconvening with the committee, because the biggest thing to support the communications outreach department. And the marketing of these programs is also the initial presentation that's given to the community, and just being super intentional where we place.
Right.
And how we promote those events, to have as many community members to come out and support, community scholars and their families come out and support those programs, and really just be informed.
And I know that the Gifted Advisory Council, 'cause I'm on that as well, they did, they did a phenomenal program last, oh, it was the beginning of a month, and I don't remember which one. But it was over at Roland Grice, and they had all sorts of engaging activities for kids and for parents to come and do. So I know that they're, they're highly involved in all that too.
That's so great.
Yeah.
If it's helpful to you, Ms. Mason, Mr. Johnson, Sean Lamb, Kamika Sidbury, and I developed an Equity Audit spreadsheet, in a sense. It was a tool that would be available to every school, as well as school leaders, to kind of examine the availability of high-quality curricular opportunities across the district in each school, as well as student participation in those high-quality curricular opportunities.
What kind of item to, maybe next, to bring and just show as information?
Sure, I'll be happy to share the spreadsheet. Does that sound to you, Sean?
Yeah, absolutely.
So I think in, in wrapping us up and collecting what everyone has said, that we have done a lot since the strategic plan was written. A lot of this we have accomplished, or is in process of being accomplished. So I do think we're, we're due for an update on this form. I do not feel the work is done, and will it ever be done? No, 'cause I think the work of Equity, it will be continuously ongoing. So I don't know whether I need to make a motion, but some way, Ms. Mason or Mr. McManus, I just wanna see how we can update the Equity components of the strategic plan to be relevant to where we are in our work today, is what I feel we need to do.
What was the process initially?
The process initially, when we developed this, where we came together with members of senior leadership to develop these strategies and tactics, and then it was all submitted to the board and voted on for approval.
I would assume it would be the same type of process. Mr. McManus?
Shall I do it? I'm fighting.
I got you. If, if there were more strategies and tactics that needed to be added, this committee could develop them and then present them to the board, correct? And then we would determine whether they would go on the strategic plan? Is that accurate?
But that, but I hope so. But technically, we would go through him, Mr. Johnson, who would then go to the superintendent, who would then?
That is what we did last?
Bring it to the board, or the board could bring it to them.
Yeah, and I'll, and I'll just reinforce that, it's what we did last time. It's just with the distinction that since we did not have the office, it was kind of in Dr. Smith's extra time. And so now we have, you can just help us capably through that. But Dr. Smith did a lot of work directly with the, the different department leads to gather and put pen to paper on it.
To me, the, the key to the success of this committee is that you have the support of the majority of the board and the superintendent. And that's the bottom line for anything that really is accomplished, it is a top priority.
I think actually, as we wrap this up, I know we have the time.
And money.
Absolutely, yeah, the time went off a couple minutes ago.
If the direction is to modify, just identifying like a small committee, start working on what those modifications look like in real time. So it's almost like once we see, we obviously policy updates where we can see the red changes. So just get to the point where we just start drafting. And I think as a transition, this, the New Hanover County just released their poverty reduction report. And I think that may also inform some of our targets for the strategic plan. So we're wanting to make sure our strategic plan is current for this year. I think that leveraging this report would be an awesome way to do so, because it will provide some academic implications. So with that being said, I do wanna kick it off to Ms. Keynes, if you want to.
Absolutely, I'm happy. Are you, Ms. Mason, or is that okay? Good, let's do it together, in a sense. Think about how we might foster a conversation here. And I'd really like people, as they're listening just to this brief thought at the beginning, to think about how they want to contribute to this. I know that each of you, this is gonna touch your hearts and your minds, and so your brilliance will come out during this conversation. So, can we make it a little bigger? Yes, and if it helps, I sent this to each of you in an email address.
And I got to read it, yeah.
Okay, good.
Those 44 pages.
Exactly, exactly. Well, then maybe we'll treat the conversation today as like a kind of introduction to what you might read over the weekend. Perfect. So this is the county's work, 2021 through 2026, on poverty reduction. This is their plan. And New Hanover County Government convened a committee of local experts, where experts is defined by someone's scholarly pursuits, someone's lived pursuits, someone's experiences and knowledge-based, the work and the life that they've lived. Diverse experts talking about how to reduce poverty in New Hanover County. And the first thing that we need to do is understand what poverty looks like. And there's a wonderful introductory essay by Diana Washington of UNCW, who really shows us that poverty is an entangled phenomenon in the United States. And so it is also an entangled phenomenon in New Hanover County. And it's really important to understand the tanglings. So poverty intersects with education, poverty intersects with race, poverty intersects with gender and regions of the nation. And understanding those intersections is important to understand where it is we might intervene to get rid of poverty. We don't need it as a nation, we really don't need it. And I'll read this quote from Diana Washington, because I think you'll feel it. Everyone here is an education aficionado, right? You'll know what she's writing about. Poverty is a destructive and debilitating phenomenon tied to situations, structures, and systems that impede one's ability to engage fully in life. Poverty intersects with disability in the United States. That is a policy choice that we make in the United States. So I will just leave us with that, and thank you to Dr. Washington for the excellent introduction to the report. Moving on, there's a lot of information in here about place in New Hanover County, about resources and how they vary by place, resources, how they vary by age, resources, how they vary by different social dynamics. But if we move to page 28 in the document, and Caress, are you driving? You sure are, aren't you? If we move to page 28, and if people listen to this meeting, this is a publicly available report. So this should be accessible to you through the county government, and perhaps from Ms. Linda Thompson, our Chief Equity and Diversity Officer for the county. So in education, there are data presented that help us to understand patterns of where poverty is concentrated in our schools in New Hanover County, patterns of how those concentrations of poverty are associated with neighborhood violence as well. Things that we know are not really giving our children the best ingredients they need to thrive. There's a wonderful thought experiment from John Rawls, a philosopher, who says to us, I want you to tell me what a just policy is. And a just policy is any policy that you'd be willing to endure if you had no control over where you were born, what race, what gender, what education level, what economic or professional opportunities characterized your life. If you would be satisfied with that policy, knowing that you had no control where you were born, that's probably a just policy. And so that is the frame, I think, that we can attach to this report and look at the solutions that they've recommended for us. So teach financial literacy in all schools, yes? Oh, absolutely, please.
So what you're seeing in the, in the report are recommendations. So it's not to assume that these things are missing, but the, this is when we're reading through some of the solutions to really start reflecting, you know, so many things may already be in place through departments like CTE, but maybe just need to be uplifted more so the community can be aware that they're taking place.
Beautiful.
Or some that may be missed that we just wanna revisit. Or some that may be missed that we just want to revisit. So just keep that as a frame that a lot of the solutions we may have already have these checked off that we just may just need to lift up and share out, um, with our community.
Love it, absolutely love that. So as we listen, you can take a look, I don't necessarily want to read to you. But I do want to draw a couple to your attention, because they are so consistent with what we were talking about earlier today and in previous meetings. In particular, give economically disadvantaged students access to the same high level curriculum and pedagogical opportunities and high expectations as their wealthy peers. That gets back to that theory of justice, right? And very much related to what you were talking about, Ms. Mason, about gifted education. And we need to know, everybody's got access to it, right? If that's the right curriculum for them, then we want them in there regardless of their family's economic conditions, right? Absolutely. And then a little bit further down, two bullets down. Develop curricula that are relevant and meaningful to our students' lives and draw on their experiences and surroundings. Now, this is really important. And Kamika Sidbury in this committee is an excellent representative of this. When she talks about culturally relevant curriculum, that could be regionally relevant curriculum too. But we basically want to make sure that our curriculum matches where our students are coming from. Lena, you talk about it all the time with language learning, don't you?
Yes, that's, sometimes the language is so foreign to students that they take so long trying to understand what they said that they can't grasp the content. And then sometimes it's a matter of, I think, how can we call it? Because it's not that teachers in general don't have the knowledge that they need to do that, but it's a way that you need to be always aware of that potential barrier in the student's access to the content of their grade level. And we are not talking about, uh, nothing below the grade level, thinking that they have the ability to access the content, but disregarding the cultural background that they bring into the table and making it relevant and the connection. Then the students get just, they stop because they are trying to make sense with their knowledge they have, and then they miss the opportunity. And then we don't know how to come back to it. And then there's the gap keeps growing bigger and bigger. It's, but it's a matter, I don't, I don't know how really to make, it is not an, an A, B, C plan that we need to put in place. It's a matter of, of, you know, I think sensibilization, awareness, cultural, cultural, um, awareness of the population you're serving, because it varies from school to school. And now we have even the playing field a lot with a unified curriculum across the district. That is beautiful. And then some teachers have so many different experiences with the same curriculum, and that's okay. But we know that we are not going to lower the standards for this school and we are going to make them higher than the other school. We're going to make it even, but we're going to give what these children need to access that curriculum, to have access and to benefit and to enrich their experiences with the curriculum that we are providing, because our teachers are prepared to, to breach that access to the curriculum. I think that's, that's the huge thing that we need to work on.
So is it impossible to work on it? Are there no resources we could draw from?
Everything is right there. We just need to change our mindset and we need to, that everybody needs to read the book, Understanding Poverty, and we need to make, you know, we need to make a training on that every year. Our schools need to have that training, that sensibilization in terms of, this is what we know, this is the students we have. Let's, let's see what they can bring into the equation. They bring so much. They have ninety-eight percent survival skills. Okay, let's bring those skills here into the classroom. Let's make, let's open these classrooms to all the possibilities they can bring in. And then knowing the students, knowing what they know, then we can make the curriculum relevant. And then we're going to take, the pacing is going to be different, of course.
Ms. Johnson, what was the name of that again?
Uh, Understanding Poverty.
Yes.
Yes.
I'm familiar.
Yeah, you know about it, we, we've been working with.
So, yeah, we read that in my, uh, my master's.
Who's the author of that?
Um, I can, I grab that, actually I have it on my, my shelf, I'll send you a picture of it.
Yeah, and that's something that we do, on the school side work. We always work with that book and we try, but then when we start working with that book and the teachers, then we know what they don't know. It's not to their fault, they don't know what they don't know. But we need to know, so administration needs to know what teachers they are bringing into the group, and we need to take the time to train them. It's all a matter of time and bring prioritizing what is important to give our students access to the curriculum that everybody has and we love and is good, because it's rigorous. Because we want the rigor there, we don't want to lower it down for them, we just want to give them access to it and give them the time they need to access it.
What, what you just said was so important, the time, right? And I mean, that is what our, our teachers are so stretched. And, and so what, yeah, what, what supports can we offer, you know, to make, to make that space for, for that sensitivity and understanding and the ability to, you know, just, that, that, that's going to be the biggest challenge.
But you know when we are going to end up, always is talking about standardized testing. That's the big thing that we are going to end up there. We, I have all the sensibility, I know where my students are, I want to bring them where they are. But hey, May is right there and I need to do your this and they better perform, because the letter is going to tell if the teacher work or don't work with these students. So it's, it's, it's hard to try to balance that.
Right, it's a balance.
So can we just pause the report? Because right, what you uplifted could be another possible action item for us coming out of the EDI committee. So instead of creating a, if we have the opportunity to, one, get the text into the EDI committee, and is this a trainer that, you know, we can possibly develop in-house? Um, and maybe pose as a recommendation, um, to our professional development, um, Dr. Kim O'Brien, and, you know, do partnership with the curriculum instructions? Um, because again, I'll, we can use this body to, that's what we can support. You know, that's a non-budgetary, uh, way to really just drive or be the kind of, the starter for the change that we're looking for and or the assessment, we want to see how, um, we're doing in that.
Absolutely.
Yeah, yeah.
Is that, is that okay?
So that's exciting. And then as a committee, we could have a role in perhaps monitoring how that unfolds across schools and listening carefully to school representatives. Well, we would have formed this equity team at our school, but we were pulled in so many directions. Okay, how can we lift that up? Because that's a reality in schools too, because I heard two words, time and priority, that came out of this conversation between Sean and Lena that I think was so, so important. Teachers did not cause this problem. And we ask teachers to take on an incredible task of undoing what our social engines have created over the past four hundred years, right? That's a big task we've given them. Let's match it with time and resources. Be interesting to figure out what resources are needing, how much time. Hugh?
Go back to, we, we talked about so many things. I think we need to raise expectations.
Okay.
Along with everything else. My example, if, if my, if I'm accurate, before COVID, we had students who were two and three years behind in their reading ability and their math. And then we had COVID. We have kids who are in really, really some bad situations. They're going to graduate from high school, to be honest. We need to look at raising the expectations with regards to offering the summer programs, which we did for literacy, math, and maybe some science. But if I'm correct, well, my numbers, only about half of those students identified that needed to come to the summer school really came. And so I asked, why didn't we run transportation? And expect those kids, students to come to the school? And maybe even bring parents, and so they can be subjected to some instructional and/or things that would help their students. Because without the parents involved, I don't care what level you are, that's such a key today. Regardless of what people say about teenagers, parents still have a lot of influence.
It's true, yeah.
And so I just wonder why we don't do that, why we don't raise the expectation? You need, you will come to summer school. We're going to have summer school, literacy, I mean, you.
Well, to be, to be fair though, I'll just, an alternative, an alternate, so my, my son was invited to summer school, but we already had summer camps lined up and childcare lined up. And I felt like his exposure to summer camps would be as enriching. And we read every, I mean, you, you know, there, there are some days and reasons, so.
Um, but I still say, I don't, I don't know your son or how far behind or ahead or all the above, but I know we have a lot of students who literacy, literacy and basic math skills are an absolute necessity.
Right.
Never has it been so important as it is now. But yet we're letting some of these kids who are not going on a trip sit at home.
Right, slip through our cracks.
Right, that's, yeah.
So how important can that not be? Or unimportant, I, I just, I don't, I don't get it.
Or letting our children waste their time.
Do whatever's necessary to get these kids in school.
Well, and it is a good point, um, like, if we could, if there's some way to get, to get that, like, facilitate or understand what the barriers are for.
That shouldn't be the hard part, the hard part is getting to school.
Right.
We all know as teachers, teachers review the first three or four, sometimes more weeks when they come back in from summer vacation, that's some of the sharper kids.
Yeah, yep, that's true.
I mean, so that way, maybe year-round school for some of these students? With the intercessions.
I love year-round. I, I don't think that's a bad idea.
I mean, I mean, we've got to get out of the box, which I say at board meetings. We, we stay in a box.
Yeah.
We beat the thighs, but we get, I mean, we've tried everything. We have, we have paid unbelievable incentives to teachers to go to the lowest performing schools and administrators. We need to get out of the box and we need to do something totally different.
Well, what about this? What about this, Mr. McManus? Here's the county saying, we're also invested in this. We're also problem solving alongside of you. How about really thinking about this as a solution that extends well beyond the school walls, right? It isn't that changes don't need to occur inside of the school walls. It's that the real approach to education justice happens throughout the entire community. And so our county wants to work with us. Can you imagine a county where every neighborhood has a local education champion? So when the question is raised, why isn't Ms. Lamb's son attending summer school? The neighborhood champion says, oh, he's booked for the summer, he's got a lot of high quality programs. But I am concerned about so-and-so who we haven't been able to reach yet, so I'll be visiting that home tomorrow. Imagine a county full of neighborhood education champions, where we don't have to have a one-size-fits-all across the county, but neighborhoods could define what they're looking for to resource their children, because their children are their top priority.
So what you're describing is like a, 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 a community accountability model.
Absolutely.
And just thinking about what are the, the community partners that we already have that already exist in the schools and they exist in our communities and what they are already doing. Again, we are not absent of resources, you know, I, I just don't believe we're absent of resources. I just thought we just have to, we just really understand what they are and how to, you know, effectively utilize them. Or re-battleize them.
And this may be, like, building off of that and building off of what you said, it sounds like, I'm not quoting that it sounds exactly like, but it's similar to what I would imagine a social worker would do. So what would be the benefit of maybe having our social workers as twelve-month employees instead of ten-month employees? Or them contracting two months with the county and, and kind of looping and providing that gap?
I am very pro that, very pro keeping our social workers employed twelve months of the year and hiring more social workers. And I think a difference might be, um, a social worker walks into a situation with that label and it changes perhaps the dynamic. Whereas if your neighbor is your education champion or somebody else that you know, that's just a little bit different, right? But I am all for upping the social work, workforce.
But there is one thing also that me being in the field know very well, and it's when we create the timelines for enrollment, because of course we need to have timelines. Of course we need to get transportation appointed, we need to get all these people ready. But parents don't work on the same timeline as we do. When we are trying to reach out, we send letters, we call, we visit, we did, we did. When we finally get a response from the parent, then it's too late. Because they think in the parent's time, they think after the students are being out of school and say, what I'm going to do with this child? Don't you have any summer school available? And it's like three months too late.
Right.
And then we, I know, because I've left it all the time and say, yeah, I want your child to come, but we called you, we did this, we did that. Now everything is closed and transportation is hard to arrange for them and it's trying, or sometimes the, the, all the hiring has been done for the teachers and all that, so there is no way that we can get these children into the program. So tho- those, those, this, I don't know how to solve those problems, to be honest, because I leave it every year. And then I have to tell them, hey, don't come later to tell me that you need this, because I'm telling you right now that I need you to send me the paper. And sometimes they don't do it, because I don't know, they don't, they don't work with our timelines. So it's, I don't know how we can solve that problem, but that's something that happens a lot.
Well, I love it, Lena, because I'm going to ask a, a question then. They don't work with our timelines. So if we said that in any other business, if Amazon said, hey, they're not ordering things the way we want them to order things, what would Amazon do?
They'd change it immediately.
They would change it, wouldn't they? What about us in education? If we find out that our high priority children, which are all of our children, right? Our high priority children, it's just not, they're not responding to our timelines. What would we do then? If we were centering the children in that equation?
If we do it like the, maybe two or three weeks before the school actually starts? I mean, maybe that could be something.
And maybe ask them, ask them to design a response with us, right?
I don't know, yeah, I, I don't know how to navigate that, but it's, it's a recurrent issue with the, the way to communicate with parents. It's not that we don't communicate, we have open ways to give them the information to, we put it everywhere, but it doesn't make sense until it makes sense to them. And sometimes it's too late for us based on our timelines and the way we prepare for that. So we, we want, we, we really want to impact our high priority students. We need to find those ways. How can I make you really understand the importance of sending your child to this program that we know your child needs? And it's free and it's going to give you food and it's going to give you all these amazing things. And they want it, but I don't know why, they, they don't come. Because the other thing that I've been thinking all the time is, how can we get, you know, how the, the cycle that I always mentioned, the school, the parents don't trust the school because they had a problem with the school when they were children. They don't want anything to do with the school system and when they come to us, they, they don't trust us. And it takes a long time to start building that trust. So I'm thinking the way that we need to, to work around that is to start working with our parents from very early stages, before the children even access the pre-K. We need to give them some, some workshops, some access that they, that we can deem as mandatory for them to start accessing the school, so they, they are prepared. Because they, they, some of them are too young to know. They are trying to figure out their own lives and now they are in charge of a young life themselves. So how can we help them and accompany in that process? You need to do these type of things before your child can access the school system. And that is going to, then they are going to become real partners in education. And they are going to see that maybe we can break that cycle of that distrust and, and then we can finally make an impact on that family.
Now, this may be a perfect plug for some potential conversation between, or some dialogue between the Parent and Caregiver Academy.
Yeah.
To, to loop them in, because again, I think that, you know, I think they would love to hear it because they already talked about it, or it could be some new information for them as well.
We recently were trying to, to breach the communication between pre-Ks and Ks.
Yes.
That is very recent, like two or three years that we start talking in having a common tool, that is the KAs, the data assessment, that now they do it in pre-K and now we get information in kindergarten. And it's so useful, because some children have been two years or more there in the pre-K setting, and now we got all this information already compiled for them, and now we see it in kindergarten.
Yeah.
And that was amazing to have.
I think the difficulty with, with that is not all kids are using that pre-K system. I know, um, for me personally, because I have been an educator, I didn't use the pre-K system because I was with my boys. And so, um, there are plenty of parents also that, that are not accessing the pre-K system. So we've got to figure out how, how to reach those parents as well.
That's a great equity point.
If we attach it to our kindergarten enrollment and we have them, you know, if you, whatever school you're going to start, parents are going to do whatever we tell them to do in preparation for kindergarten. If we want your child to come to this school, okay, we're going to have these sessions that you can, we're going to offer these offerings throughout the month of August or July, and then you need to have come to two or three of those. And then we give them some tools and some ideas and nutrition, on routines, school routines, the basic things that they, they don't know, because it's not in them. They don't have that, that structure at home sometimes. So if we give them that first approach to. So if we give them that first approach to it, it's gonna, it's gonna start building that partnership.
I really like that.
Yeah.
And I like the Parent Academy connection, that was, I think, brilliant.
I know Ms. Farman will appreciate that too.
Yeah, absolutely, absolutely.
So is any, as we're listening to this conversation, a lot of energy, right? A lot of brilliant people here, a lot of good energy. Is anybody having maybe a different thought or a different kind of reaction that they wanna put on the table for this brilliance to work with?
I just think, before we get too deep, just to make sure we're gonna highlight, I think we mentioned three action items so far, one from the strategic plan, one from the conversation in your comments, Ms. Espinoza. So I think those may be two things to keep in mind as we're, just to kind of draw us back to our strategic plan.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and what updates will possibly look like, and maybe what are some new strategies around those things, maybe those can be just some themes, stuff to start looking at.
I really like that. Um, I don't know if, um, where this fits in action items, but if we could look at the Equity Audit Tool that we created a couple of years ago in rea- relation to curriculum, everyone having access to high-quality curriculum, everybody having access to rigorous coursework. Does that make sense too? Is that an action item or does that fit somewhere else, like a future agenda for this?
We have to bring that in, bring it in to, just to see.
Just to review, right, just to review, exactly. And then I wonder too if we might wanna consider a conversation with the folks on this task force. If this, if this is working for people and people can see this as a valuable area for our work, do we wanna make sure that the Poverty Reduction Task Force knows about us and the roles that we serve in the school district?
I definitely do, and further, I would like them to know the items that we're already doing. So just looking at this list, teach financial literacy in schools at all levels, I don't think it's at all levels, but there is personal finance in high schools right now. Um, provide affordable options for families to secure computers and Wi-Fi, we have been moving to a one-to-one district for the past two, three years now, so middle schools will be this year, and then elementary schools will be, I think, the following year to make sure every child has a laptop, grade 12 through si- 12 through six, and then iPads for elementary or iPads for K through three, I think. So, um.
And as, as August 10th, I was in the meeting for the deployment of the resources for middle school, and they told us by August 10th, every middle school is gonna have laptops.
And then not just giving them the devices, but we do have checkout available for hotspots for families who do not have that internet as well. So like, we're making sure that every kid has what they need access to when it comes to, um, computer technology.
But they also come with technology literacy, because the, the ITs are gonna come into the different sites to train the students on acceptable news policy, and all that is related to technology, if you are allowed to take it home, what do you do with that? All the process to make good use of that technology as well.
And then when we're looking at work with our schools to make parent involvement affordable and convenient, so I know a lot of our, um, working, I've been working with the Parent and Caregiver Academy, and that's something we've been working on to make sure we have sessions, not just, um, at one location, but we have them at multiple locations across the county. We thought first that, um, locations at other county buildings would be preferred, but then we did our survey where, what were the factors preventing families and where would families prefer to meet, and eighty percent of them said we prefer to meet at our schools than community locations. So just kind of looking at that information, gathering that information, hearing what our families are saying. They also mentioned time being a constraint, so we now are offering, I know, the curriculum session that we have on the August 16th, it's morning, afternoon, and night. We have the, um, enrollment sessions with the Parent Academy, Parent Academy next week, and we offered more sessions, two on Tuesday, two on Thursday, in different times of day, in different parts of town, to reach different, different, um, someone help me with my words?
To match.
Demographics and areas.
That's what I was.
Yeah, to match in the water net, thank you.
Is that information shared with the school so they can disperse them in their, their own circle?
We've dispersed, um, all that information has been shared with families through School Messenger, and it's been shared, um, on social media, I believe it's also been in the, um, updates, the principal updates.
Oh, yeah.
Um, let's see. Give economically disadvantaged students access to the same high-level curriculum. I'm interested to having, um, Maureen Meehan in here to talk about AIG and what that looks like, as well with Jean Hall, so that we can report back and find out some data on that. Keep stocks of school supplies, snacks, clothes, other basic necessities. Going back to our social workers, you're probably not gonna find a single social worker in our community who doesn't have a box in their office already that has this. And all of our school nurses, um, at the beginning of the school year, the PTAs ask for clothes to come in for students who may need coats, who may have accidents at school and need change of clothes. So those are things that we are providing and do have available. Could we use more? Probably always, but we do have access to them now. Yes, Ms. Mason?
And I also know that for some schools, the PTA raises money to be able to buy, buy those supplies for.
Yes.
And then the, the various partners that do the annual faculty giveaways, senior school giveaways, so if a school is, if a school doesn't have resources, it's just, it's a call away to get resources.
And then develop curriculums that are relevant and meaningful, we've talked about that and how the district is working from one solid curriculum now, and again, I don't know a lot of information on that part, but I'd be more than willing to reach out to someone who can provide us more information regarding that. And then going back to August 16th, I'm plugging the Coffee Curriculum Conversations and Collaboration Events that are, will be happening at Roland Gries Murray Middle School and Ogden Elementary for families, so they can see what that curriculum looks like. And then the final one, work to ensure that qualified students are introduced into gifted talented programs. Again, those conversations where we meet with Jean Hall and Maureen Meehan, who can develop and give us more information. So I think it's very important to take back to, um, this task force, a lot of these items are already ongoing, developing in our schools, but we would, we love to share more information with them and bring in the subject matter experts who could talk about the ones we are not qualified for talking about.
Excellent.
I think that's a great idea too. Can I, can I make a comment about the last one? Um, I, I definitely think the over-identify, or over-identification of, of Black and Brown students into, um, special education is, is a pervasive problem. I mean, the Office of, um, I'm sorry, the Department of Education, Special Education Office has identified that in, in one of their reports, I think issued in 2018, as just a pervasive issue. But I do wanna say, um, I was at a, a Women in Nuclear Conference last week, and they, they, um, a woman who is now, uh, the city manager for the city of Phoenix for all their federal funding, uh, said that she was identified and put in special education early on, you know, when she entered kindergarten because English was her second language, although she knew two languages at the time, and it was, there was this horrified audience reaction to someone who's obviously a very bright woman, um, being identified and put in special education. That's a, a little bit, um, not, I don't, I don't think painful is the right word, but if people in special education are getting services that are in truly the least restrictive environment, it would not be so, such a devastating thing for our children. And so, I mean, there's kind of a, a two-pronged problem here, the over-identification is rooted in bias, yes, but the separation of children in special education is also rooted in a different kind of bias. So there's a lot of intersectionality we could unpack by, by continuing our work, um, for both AIG and obviously for, um, EC, EC students as well. So anyways, I know I'm preaching to the choir here a little bit, but I'll just say it, it highlights the need for, you know, not only fixing the problem of over-identification, but fixing the problem of a lot of these students wouldn't be well-served by being in a less restrictive environment.
Yeah, I really like that, thank you.
And I do know that there is overlap with those, some of those students as well, um, having been involved a little bit with the, um, Gifted Advisory Council, they've, we've talked about how there are definitely students with IEPs that are also gifted, so there's definitely an overlap in, in those.
Right, and how those services could look and be delivered.
No, I love that. So that's, that's all of our time for this, right?
Yes.
Yeah. Okay. Ms. Mason, Mr. Johnson, you run a really tight ship here, thank you, very effective.
We got through everything today.
You know, a special shout-out to Mr. Hugh McManus as well.
To Mr. Hugh McManus.
Contributions on this evening.
I think just to close, can we just, um, you mentioned the three action steps, just to kind of review, just so that we're all on the same page, what were the three action steps that, um, we identified?
So the first thing we mentioned, as we were just going through the review of the strategic plan, um, possibly forming just a small task force within this community to, uh, begin drafting what those updates, um, look like, um, just to go have, uh, some, something prepared in case it gets approved, then we can just really hit the ground running. Uh, the second item, um, came from Ms. Espinoza. Uh, the Understanding Poverty Training, um, so for us to get access to that book within here, within the committee, um, and see if, um, really drafting a potential training to support, um, the professional learning of our staff within the school district. Um, I'm looking online for the text, I just wanna make sure I have the author, do you know the author's name?
She linked it in our email.
Okay.
It's Ruby Payne, P-A-Y. The name is a framework for understanding poverty, the name is Ruby Payne Payne, P-A-Y-N-E. And I know some schools already have it and some done some work with it, but just make sure that everybody has it, and, I mean, that we act upon it.
I mean, because there are so many entry points, uh, for that training, especially as just working closely with human resources, um, that training can be kind of just embedded , um, so many different ways, so if we can draft that, we could just do the head of it there.
And we can have a, a year-long training on implicit bias, all on that point. Remember when I was started and I called you because we needed to work with that? I didn't know that people didn't even feel that was a thing.
Yeah.
Like, and then, no, I don't have it, no, what is that, no, they say, wow, that was so huge to address that, at least to put it on the table and say, we all have bias, we all have for different things, so.
And the third, um, item was to just give that update to the New Hanover County Poverty Reduction Committee Task Force.
Task Force.
Um, so whether it's either we're going to them or they come to us, that's just, we could determine that later. But those are the three things I just wanna, in closing, um, to uplift, um, I just wanna appreciate you guys for taking the time, again, to come out and support. Um, no, Ms. Beatty and Ms. Berry will be here if they, if they could, um, but we'll definitely fill them in.
And then not necessarily an action item, but just to also keep in mind that we're looking to bring, um, special education to our September meeting, is that the will of the committee?
In, in possibly, yeah, I don't know if we wanted, that'll be up to.
That would be a very, very full.
So that would be.
Yeah.
We're gonna be super intentional about how we take, take up your time, so we can talk more.
Yeah.
Um, so board members, we can talk, we can meet and see if September makes sense, or if it's like a different type of meeting that needs to take place.
Is, is this taking the place of our August meeting, so we won't meet again until September?
No, so this is August meeting.
Okay, this is, yeah, okay.
Cause I want, I want to keep it consistent, so we also be right before the board meeting.
That makes sense.
I'm glad you guys appreciated that.
Yeah, that makes sense.
About it.
Yeah.
Okay. Um, so, in spite of optimistic closure, um, I love optimistic closure.
Yeah.
Great, great, great week, uh, weekend, uh, a lot of rest, they're really kicking start this Monday, um, back in the office, um, and summer's over. It's almost over. And some people are sad, but I'm actually happy. Summer's almost over, and we can kick this year back off again.
Oh, and our schools at Freeman and Snipes are starting the school year this week, so, um, best wishes to those kids.
Love it. Excellent. Really optimistic that when we create a conversation space for people to acknowledge how important children are, not only to our communities right now, but to our entire future, great things can happen. We, we don't disagree about that, do we? Children are at the heart of this.
I'm really grateful for the conversations and the civil conversations, and we can agree or disagree.
Yeah. Yeah, I just wanna give a shout-out to, to both Ms. Mason and Ms. Keynes for your prep. This, this prep and this agenda I thought was very effective today, and I, I agree, great conversation.
Always enjoy.
Always enjoy.
Very excited, always being here and being able to, you know, to bring my little, my contribution from being in the trenches all day and having the, the firsthand experience that we can, uh, you know, bridge the gap and then really give what our teachers need and the support, because we have so much. We, I'm very, always very thankful of all the great resources the county has, and I'm also very thankful to be part of this conversation to, to get the best out of all the great things we have here, so. Great people, ready to be open to talk and to change things, that, that's what we need to make our community great, so, very happy.
Thank you guys so much.
Bye, thank you. Who has to go home and cook dinner now?
Me. I do, but luckily it was just like a cheese pizza was her reply, so.